Call the, um, special board meeting to order. Ryan, say pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Medical, please, call the room.
Justice here.
Justice Brewer.
Here.
Justice here.
Justice Todd.
Here.
Justice here.
Okay, before we get into this, um, special meeting, again, I'd like to reiterate, excuse me, that this particular meeting, um, was called to order and also this is a, I see a lot of motions that are gonna be presented and a lot of these things weren't discussed ahead of time and, um, I'm opposed to that particular part of it. Um, we talk about transparency all the time. It's been talked, thrown around since the new board came in and before that. But to have a, cause some of these things that are on here, I don't even understand, um, what they mean, never had a chance to talk about, but this board wants to pass them tonight. For what reason, I have no idea what it means and why are we doing that? But as we go through it, I'll express my concern because there's some things that I don't understand and I've, I've never had a chance to talk. But before I get into that, I'd like to find out from the board, when did the board discuss these particular motions to bring it to the lawyers, for them to put it into a ordinance or a resolution? When did the board have the need to do that? Anybody on the board want to expand on that part of it?
I can address number five. Um, it was done at the last meeting when Mr. McGrath was sitting in the audience and I asked him, when it was stated that we weren't gonna be able to pay bills because we don't have that budget passed, I asked him how we can get around that and he said that we could create an ordinance, a stopgap ordinance, so he was sitting right there and I asked him to prepare that and everybody was here. So I was nobody attracted to it, so that, that, that might interest.
Any other ones that are on here? I mean, any of the other motions that are in here, that are here that was asked to, um, prepare ordinances or resolutions? So the lawyers just did this on their own? There was no meeting, there's nobody to talk to the lawyers to ask them to repair this resolution? Um, statement of whatever, so no one on this board, so the lawyers just did this on their own? Okay, so I'm asking the, and for the record, uh, the, uh, attorney is here, so I'm asking your attorney, who discussed these particular ordinances and resolutions that were prepared by you, prepared by the, um, oldest cert law firm? Who discussed to have these resolutions and ordinances prepared?
Mayor, to answer your question as far as, um, conversations or preparing what's on the special meeting agenda, as far as the employment agreement, I believe that was discussed in executive session at the last meeting and that was follow-up to that, based upon the interview with Mr. Williams. Your ordinance authorizing, um, the expenditures pending passage of the annual budget appropriation ordinance, that was also brought up the last meeting, uh, to allow the village to make payroll and pay its bills and continue on until you pass your next budget. As far as the resolutions, uh, for Dr. Straugers, uh, that was at the direction of John Murphy, who was appointed by the village board as special legislative council.
Okay, my question that you, um, I'm sure I may have came in, is we never discussed this. These orders were passed, I'm sorry, these orders were penned by you guys, but usually when we do think we have a committee meeting, we talk about discussing, go back and forth and then, at that time, I asked the board, do you want to put this on the, uh, regular meeting to have it voted on? That's usually the protocol that will be always done since I'm in trustee.
I have a question. We've been questioned a lot lately about whether or not we're doing things in the right order. Uh, all we did was call the meeting to order to do a roll call and we're having discussion on these particular items. Don't, doesn't discussion follow a, a motion in a second? I'm just wondering, because we're all being called to order on how our parliamentary procedure is being questioned. So we're having discussion now on items that are on the agenda. So I think we should have discussion as the agenda items get to table, in my opinion.
Thank you for your opinion, I appreciate that. What I'm asking is, why these particular items, how they made it to be voted on and never discussed at an open board meeting to ask questions? Um, I'm sure that, you know, we can come back and forth and go back and forth on how we got to that point, but there's nothing in, in any agenda to discuss how we're going to do the expenditures, what are the expenditures, what appropriations are we voting on and how much money are we talking about? We just, and that's just one of the things. As far as the agreement, as far as the employment agreement, I just got a copy yesterday of the contract, we never discussed that. We never talked about it, it was never brought to this board about it. I mean, we talked about hiring, no one said anything about the meat of the particular contract. No one mentioned, um, they asked the gentleman how much he felt he should get paid, but there was nothing in it about what, what, what the contract entails and we never discussed that. Since we weren't, you know, it's not a matter of trustee if you're going back and forth, it's a matter of proper protocol. Now, yes, I, I mean, before you guys vote on to, to do everything, I'm just asking a question and I think the people here need to know how we got to this point, because I don't even know. This is the second time this has happened, the first time was on the 21st of May. Here it is again, we have a meeting to vote, not to discuss, but a special meeting to vote and to appoint. And never had that discussion. Yes, we vetted a person, but we never talked about the meat of that contract. We never talked about how much it would be. We never talked about how much, what are we talking about appropriation? How can you vote appropriation or vote on appropriation without a budget? So how much money are we appropriating? Just until we feel as if, you know, at that particular point in time, we stopped, we don't pay this, we pay this, we don't, that's not how anyone does business and that's not how our business is supposed to be handled. So, and then to make, and then as, as the lawyer just stated, that you have another law firm come in and on their opinion, on their opinion, they said the contract is null and void. Not depending on any court, just depending on a person that's, that's a lawyer, says that, that the contract is null and void and let's go with that. Those are the things that I'm asking, how can we, as this board, vote on something to that, to that, um, to that matter, how can we vote on that? And we never even talked about some of these things that are here. It could, uh, statement of work. I mean, it's just, it's just a lot of things, but those are just my comments. There was nothing that I'm asking you guys to vote on, nothing in common. Because we've always talked about, um, transparency, I would say. So with that being said, that being said, stop at item number three. Motion to approve the employment agreement between the Village of Salt Village and Christopher Williams.
Second.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Williams and seconded by trustee, was it, um, Bell? Any questions?
Yeah, let's have a question. So, again, I want to reiterate how last week, uh, we did have an executive session where we did discuss, uh, potential, uh, filling a spot with the candidate and there was no, as far as I know, there was no agreement upon salary. There was a range and that was it. We didn't discuss, uh, an exact figure amount or benefits as a board, at least I was a part of that meeting. And so therefore that I would vote no on this because I don't know what's going on. Cause I didn't agree to this.
Any other question? My turn?
Justice Bell? Justice Brewer?
Yes.
Justice Grant?
No.
Justice Jazinski?
Yes.
Justice Todd?
Yes.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Motion to carry. Motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the recording of board meetings.
I'd like to take all that motion, please, Mr. Mayor.
Is that a motion or is it a thing?
I'd like to take it. A motion to take or you don't want a motion?
Okay, you have a second.
Yes.
Moved by trustee Williams, seconded by trustee Bell. To take all the motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the recording of board meetings. Me, I'm sorry, the recording of board meetings. Any questions?
Justice Brewer?
Yes.
Justice Grant?
Yes.
Justice Jazinski?
Yes.
Justice Todd?
Yes.
Justice Grant?
Yes.
Yes. Motion to carry. Number five, a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing expenditures pending passage of annual budget and appropriation ordinance. This is the one I don't understand. I don't know how you can, I mean, okay, I just don't understand. Okay, well, I have a motion, there's a motion for that, I mean, do I have a motion for that?
Second.
Moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Jazinski, any questions?
Question. Mr. Mayor, so last week trustee Williams did ask Attorney McGrath, uh, how do we proceed if we do not pass a budget? And he gave the response that, you know, the law the last two years has, uh, pretty much gave a stopgap budget, basically. However, we did discuss that. That was just a question and an answer. We didn't, as a board, decide to say, hey, well, we should, we should do this because of X, Y, Z. Uh, personally, I think that we should not be doing this because all we're doing is kicking the can down the road. There is some disagreements between what the board and what the mayor wants and therefore I think that there's no point, uh, in, in kicking this can down the road. The finance director gave us a budget that he proposed that was balanced based on his recommendations and I don't see what's the purpose of not passing that budget as it stands. So therefore, why are we even doing this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Okay, uh, to address your, uh, concern, Mr. Grant, we've had three very lengthy heated discussions over the budget. There was a fourth meeting scheduled, which was canceled by the mayor, never took place. And that is why having a village administrator will be to our advantage because the village administrator can immediately start tackling this budget and hopefully we'll have a budget soon. The budget that the mayor wanted to present did not include the salary for, for village administrator and this board decided a long time ago, this current board decided and voted on a village administrator, which thankfully we appointed today. So in answer to your question, we will need a stopgap ordinance so we can continue to make payroll because if the way we were going, we were not going to get a budget passed in the time we fashion.
Well, trustee Williams, I, to respond back to your response, I would say that we had plenty of time. Uh, I believe we had, you know, May 21st, uh, where you guys passed 14 different ordinances that we could have put that on the agenda and discussed then. Uh, therefore we had plenty of time, I think your priorities were messed up. Uh, that's just my opinion.
That's your opinion.
Oh, that's just my opinion.
I have a question.
That's just my opinion. Uh, so therefore,
Got a question.
Ask him.
So therefore, Mr. Mayor, um, I don't feel like we need to do this. Uh, there's always gonna be some disagreement and then how is village administrator on day one want to come in and say this is what we do, this is my idea?
The mayor's going to have to call the question. Now, we passed forward, don't we, we don't want to discuss this.
The problem I have, and I'm sorry, I, I understand that, but I don't know what amount of money we're talking about. I don't know, I, but I'm looking at you passing an appropriation without a budget. You're passing to approve, to appropriate money and we don't even know how much money we're talking about. So I, I really don't understand, I don't want to put this village and these residents in harm's way.
That is not what it says.
That's what you're doing, you're, you're actually,
Mr. Mayor, please.
I'm trying, I'm talking now. I'm not out of order. I'm talking now. And I don't understand, I do not understand and I'm not gonna sit here and put this village in that type of harm's way to pass a blank check that the board has a chance to appropriate and we don't even know how much we're talking about. We have no idea how much money we're talking about appropriations until the board feels that, oh, we don't pay this one, we will pay this one. I mean, really, that's all I'm asking. Usually appropriation to pass or appropriation to pass after a budget, so you have an amount. There's no amount here. It says pending the passage of an annual appropriation authorized necessary expenditures. Who, who, who determines what a necessary expenditure is? That's all I'm saying. This, this word, this wording here is what I have a problem with. Now, if you don't want me to, to, to bring that to the, to the public, then, then, okay, fine. But I don't understand what a necess, authorized necessary expenditures upon the basis of appropriation for the preceding fiscal year, pending the passage of annual appropriation ordinance for the current fiscal year. Now, me myself, I don't understand that and if you guys do, fine. I need somebody to explain that to me because I don't, that doesn't mean anything.
He's right there.
Okay, but, okay. But you all came up with this. The lawyers didn't come up, I asked the question, who came up with this, this verbiage? Who came up with this verbiage? Okay, Mr. McGrath, can you explain this right now, somebody? What does this mean?
The, uh, proposed ordinance is a stopgap ordinance just to continue how you're currently operating so you can make payroll and pay the bills, uh, to your vendors and make other bills that the, uh, the village is obligated to make, uh, without a budget in place. My office put the language together, we put it, uh, together for other municipalities through the years. I, I would note that people in this village keep commenting this daily that, uh, there's a budget appropriation, uh, there's some confusion based on the last appropriation budget that was passed by the village when we were around. The, it's two separate systems. You have to either operate under the budget system or the appropriation system. You've always operated under the budget system. We included the appropriation in the ordinance because basically your past ordinance, uh, that you passed last year stated budget and appropriation, but it's nonsensical because you can't operate under both pursuant state statute. So it's to allow the village to continue with their, uh, financial obligations until, uh, the board and the mayor and the village administrator get together, work out the, uh, the items on the budget and pass the budget.
Okay, my question still, necessary expenditure. Who makes that determination?
It's a continuation of how the village has been operating, just as three weeks ago. Whoever considered what was necessary and proper to make payments, it continues that just as the village has been operating, it's the status quo until you, uh, finalize and approve your next budget.
So are we operating on the last budget? That was just for year 2018, 19? Because we can't operate on 2019, 20. Are we operating on the, what we had?
Correct, you're operating under the budget that you still have in place. It's just an extension of that budget until you pass your new budget. Your budget hasn't been passed.
Okay, so we're operating on, okay, then I appreciate you saying that. We're operating on that particular budget. That particular budget does not have an administrator in that budget. There is no administrator position and there's no pay for that particular, um, position. So how, if we're operating under that, how do we add to that? How do we add more to that budget? Cause now what you just did is add more money to that particular budget that didn't, that didn't exist.
Well, it's not me, it's the village board.
Okay, I'm just saying how,
I think if you look at the next couple items on the special meeting agenda, I think it will take care of it.
Oh, so, okay, so now with this, okay, now I understand what you're saying. So we're gonna take this away and we're gonna add that in place of that. It's basically, because that's what the next two things are about. So the next two things is to take away a position and add this one to that. But that was, that's not, that's not how you, I mean, if it's not in the budget, that position's not in the budget, but you're gonna operate under that position. Now we're talking on both sides. Cause if, if it's not in there, it's not in there. But if you decide to want to do that and put it in there, then we can do that because we would get rid of this. Okay, all right, I just wanted to, to say. All right, um, any other questions?
That sounds like the, uh, the job of that program, correct?
I see now that, I see now, but you, 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 no, you gotta make the statement, that's not the question. You make the statement, no, that's okay. That's, 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 that's fine, that's fine. That's fine, that, that, I see now what you meant. That's, that's, that's fine. I understand. I understand, um. Okay, I, okay, call the room.
Justice Grant?
No.
Justice Jazinski?
Yes.
Justice Todd?
Yes.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice Bell?
Yes.
Justice Brewer?
Yes.
Motion to carry. Item number six, motion to approve a resolution declaring the employment contract of the Village of Salt Village, uh, human resource, human resource consultant void and as a neutral.
Second. You got it?
Second.
Moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee, um, Williams. Brewer, okay, trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Brewer. Any questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor? Again, so, we're going to call Murphy, Colins, Donahue, special legislative council. That's their recommendation and is their opinion that this contract is pretty much void. Um, again, what makes his opinion count, uh, for our mother's board and our government and to say that this contract is void? Uh, this contract was, uh, put in place, uh, by the previous board, so I'm not sure how this board, in the opinion of, uh, the special legislative council, can make this contract void. Also, what facts does he have in order to say that this contract does not count? Uh, and also, since he did some work, obviously, where then was this, uh, for this work? Because I, last thing I've heard or remember, uh, some trustees were saying that we would not start a special investigation since it was brought before the board first. So obviously some, something started and finished, uh, because they came with this question. So that's just all I had, is coming.
Any other question? My turn?
Justice Jazinski?
Yes.
Justice Todd?
Yes.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice Bell?
Yes.
Justice Brewer?
Yes.
Justice Grant?
No.
Motion to carry. Motion to approve a resolution concerning the statement of work of the village human resource consultant. I don't understand, because if you don't have one, then what's the statement of work?
Second.
Moved by trustee Williams, seconded by trustee, uh, Todd. Any questions? Oh. My turn?
Justice Todd?
Yes.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice Bell?
Yes.
Justice Brewer?
Yes.
Justice Grant?
No.
Yes.
Motion to carry. Item number eight, public comment. All questions can ask, all questions and comments must be directed to the mayor and the, uh, each question is in regard to the, um, special meeting only. And, um, I'll, I'll answer the questions at the end, um, of the, uh, comments. Please state your name. Oh, press until it's green.
James Clark. Um, this may be the first meeting that I've attended physically that this meeting don't watch. No, don't watch how you do, new five are acting. You are not acting in the best interest of the village. Um, and you're supposed to be just on questions on what's happening at this meeting? Well, I'll answer. Number one, who decided on a person named Christopher Williams to be what? Motion to approve the agreement, employment agreement between the village and Christopher Williams? For what purpose? To run the day-to-day operations?
Wait, hold, 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 no. No, we're not, all right, hold.
And second part of that, does who decide on this special? Next one, um, approve an ordinance authorizing the recording of the meeting. I thought she was doing that. Marva, aren't you recording the meeting? Okay, Mr. Mayor, that was my question. I don't know why anybody jumped on that first, you know, passed it and ooh, oh, second half. Does the audience or the village know what the heck you're talking about? No. They're telling silly. The way you ran this meeting is ridiculous, voting on things. This is just a special meeting. These things haven't even been discussed as usual at a committee meeting, which is supposed to be after this. What the hell are you voting on things for? All right, number, whatever, five. These are all silly. These are all just silly things. Approve the ordinance authorizing expenditures pending passage of an annual budget. You're gonna buy stuff before you get the money? I mean, that's what it is. And, and for what and for how much? That's fine. There's only two more things and I'll mess with those also. Motion to approve a resolution declaring the employment contract of the Village of Human Resources Consultants. So you're gonna go against what the person came to a board meeting from our insurance, uh, village's insurance company and says, you need a human resource person. You can't do without it, you need it. So what it is do, not you guys, but the board that was in, Linda and Grant, the board, uh, passed a resolution. Hey, what? You guys decided you want to move the money to add an administrator, resident, Eric. We're not stupid. Thank you.
Julie Kentsky. I'd like to go back in time to Towers, when Mayor Towers was in, uh, and remind people of a few things. People that are here tonight, people that said things and did things and now tonight they're changing their mind. Back when Towers was in and we had a trustee that resigned because he was moving, Mayor Towers appointed Francine Anderson to that man's seat. At that time, after he did it, there was a lot of talk about the illegal way it was done, that Francine Anderson was illegal as a trustee because the board was never given the chance to talk about it and give their opinions. And the leader of that was trustee Burgess. He said she was illegal. We didn't even get to talk about it. We're the trustees, we're supposed to have a word. And all of a sudden, trustee Burgess is now a mayor and he forgets those things. Nobody is given any chance at what, who's in, who's out. Nobody is given any chance at what, who's in, who's out, decisions are being made. Transparency is talked about, but it doesn't exist in some instances. People were hired without the board. Money was spent without the board. We've got all kinds of things to support what is being said. The plan group was put in order during Mayor Towers' night, and the plan group is the one that started with the, uh, taping of all the meetings. And one of those tapes was the picture that was on the internet with Mayor Towers, uh, swearing in Francine Anderson, and the caption about how illegal that was. And that was written by Joseph Wizewode. And so we have records to show what we're saying is not a lie. You have to make, you're sitting here talking about the budget? Things were in the budget that we didn't even know about. You wanna know why, uh, we say that there's no transparency? What happened to that lawyer that you wanted to hire? You, you have a problem with Olson and Sturp and the amount of money that we owe them? And yet you weren't thinking about the residents or our tax dollars or anything when you were gonna hire in somebody at six hundred dollars an hour? I have been coming up to this podium for two years, talking about HR being overpaid. And you didn't wanna hear it. And now it's being brought to a stop. Now, all I can say is I commend you trustees. At least you're trying to get us back on track.
Kathy Betcher, I commend you trustees for doing what you can to bring this village back to where it was meant to be. I think that if I understand correctly, the money that we save from the HR and whatever else has been removed from employment will cover our, our village manager. And with that, the village manager may be able to try and get a grocery store in here. Why didn't the mayor and Mr. Wizewode, when he was here, um, act as an inner, with the, uh, village and the grocery store? So that we didn't lose the only grocery store we had in town? Are you going to go out and try and get a grocery store here? I, I don't think so. At least the village manager can do that. Or are we going to get more?
You know, I wasn't rude to your guy.
Sorry. Wow, I'm trying to talk to you.
Okay, I understand, I understand, go ahead.
But, um, I lost my train of thought now that you flashed over. I'm sorry, thank you.
Carol, probably next.
Uh, I look at all these items going here, and what bothers me is, you know, the mayor has, which trustee went to the lawyer that put all this together, who did? You know, if you don't respect the man, respect the position. I mean, you did this, just say you did it. And move on with it, just on. I respect all of you up there. I have no problem with none of you up there. I may not agree with what you guys do, but I respect it. But the thing is, the mayor has, who put this together, who went to the attorney? It's like breaking a laptop home. Who broke the laptop? You're gonna lie about that, everybody get whipped to somebody to bet and go for that? Let's say you broke the laptop, I went to the attorney. We did this, this trustee and I, and nobody. Go, go hide it, okay? Thank you.
I don't know why they're so concerned. They're asking if you're scared. I'm not scared of anything. Am I ready? Thank you. The article that Ms. Cass was, uh, referring to, I have a copy of it, and I do wanna read it word for word. This was written, as she said, by Mr. Wizewode. And this was regarding what the mayor said back when Mr. Towers did what he did. Trustee Burgess said, following the meeting, he didn't even consult with the board nor ask our consent. State law states the mayor must seek the advice and consent of the board. Now, I guess he's forgotten all that, but I want to commend this board for trying to correct some of the things that have been done in the last two years. You stood up to the challenge. It needs to be addressed. We know there's things that are wrong, and it needs to be addressed. And thank you, board, for doing that.
Right wing here. Uh, for the benefit of the people that don't understand what's going on right now, I would suggest this to you. Do what I do. Go to the library you have it here. Ask the director to let you see the file and how the village performed from nineteen fifty-four. Tell you what the rules and regulations are to, how this board and how this village are running. I don't care what somebody sits back here and talk about. They can talk because of the fact right now, things have changed. Let's understand this. Just things have changed, but whether the lack of it or not has changed. We didn't like it when we talked about it, but we had been acting fool every night. We didn't do this. So what I'm saying to you is this. Why don't you, if you don't understand that once the, the four trustees, the five trustees is up there, the mayor sits in the middle, that is his authority. If three trustees say yes, and three says no, he said what they have to do now. Other than that, that's all he can do. Not like that or not, that is the way South village is running. I'm not talking about the other village, but that's the way South village is running. If you got any doubts about it, we, me, when we at the library, I will prove to you.
Anybody?
Who will that prove to you?
Okay, only thing I, um, will respond on, because everything else is opinions. And everybody's entitled to those opinions. Um, the first one was who decided on, uh, Mr. Williams, the board here. Uh, um, we don't, to me, I thought he came here for a second, because I know that was that final decision. But obviously, it is their final decision because they brought it, uh, to light tonight. That being said, um, I'll ask for motion to adjourn. Someone? Moved by trustee Jositski, second by trustee Bell. I'm sorry, trustee Todd, second by trustee Bell. All in favor? Motion carried. We'll be back in twenty minutes. We call the meeting to order. Committee, media, the whole, now please click call roll.
Trustee Dow?
Here.
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 Okay, first item we have, um, is the refunding of the villages two thousand eight, two thousand nine TIF bond. Oh, I'm sorry. I was asking, I'm not sure that. Um, I'll ask, first of all, I'm gonna ask the board to add one item to the agenda, and that's the item to open the bid, seal bid for the, um, tank, um, the expansion tank. This is the bid here, this is brought to us by Maguire, I A Company Incorporated, Sioux City, I, I'm sorry, Sioux Falls, October. And then also, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna delete one item from the agenda, and that's the item from the proposal by Bud Ambulance. And then the other page.
I would like to say my sign. For the sign that is...
My dedication, okay.
I have to, you know, research on the signatures.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we don't have to do, um, ask for, um, to add something, amendment to add to the agenda? We're just gonna open up a bid?
Well, this bid was, 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 okay, this was supposed to be the last meeting that we, that we had, and we didn't have this, so we need to do this as soon as possible. So we can get it all to the, uh, engineering, so, because, uh, they have two already, which they should have three at the time, but it didn't come in, so we just now have it. And we need to do this as soon as possible, in a form, in a form with the, the board. So that's why we can't wait. It gives a time, because there's a time constraint, so we don't have, we cannot, you know, wait until we have those other two sitting there.
And the reason why it is on page two, trustee Williams, is because it does not require a vote. It could require a vote, then we did not take action on it at this meeting. This is not. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to, uh, open this bid for Maguire, Maguire, I A. Okay, it does have a... It does have a, um, bid bond, and the bid bond is guaranteed ten percent of the, for the bid. And the bid is as follows. For the rising pipe replacement, fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. That's fifty-eight, three eighty. And the installation is fifteen thousand dollars. That's seventy-three thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars for the total bid. This I will pass along to Robinson Engineering. But then to look at it, with the other bids that they have, to make sure that this is a qualified bid. And, uh, that's it. Any questions? Anybody have questions, Marva? All right, first item, I'm sorry, is, uh, the refunding of the, uh, two thousand eight, two thousand nine TIF bonds. Uh, we brought here today, today, I'm sorry, today by Mr. Bob Bell and Mr. Chuck Norman. You guys can come right up here and, um, and, uh, y'all, you know, speak loud and let the board know what, what, who wants to do with these particular two thousand eight, two thousand nine bonds.
Uh, good evening, I'm Chuck Doron from Canada Capital. We have an active, as the, uh, financial advisor to the village who discussed the, the most important bond, the two thousand, nineteen eighty bond, those bonds were closed a quarter week ago. Uh, they were not acquired, uh, from the largest securities. And would like to report that we get extra results after, uh, the presentation we called in the last month. So too much marketplace, good results. Uh, that resulted in us also continuing to look at other outstanding bonds of the village, particularly two thousand eight, two thousand one bonds. What we've discovered, if we go back some time, was there's, there's some outstanding savings in those of the village by refunding those bonds. So, um, how far we do, I'd like to, to Bob Bell, for Walker Student, and we'll, we'll both be in some discussions.
Good evening, I'm a hot seat here. Uh, as Chuck had mentioned, we got really good news in regards to the sale of bonds last, uh, couple weeks ago, which is still to be had at all. The results came back better than we had anticipated, and better than what was presented to the board at June eighteenth committee of the whole. So I wanted to go through that quickly and then go through the new savings opportunity of the O eight, O nine bonds. Uh, then in front of you, you should have posted that engagement documents, which is the same theme that we were, uh, the last bond issue, and we're ready to keep this same theme together. Uh, this new bond issue, we realize that we can't take action on that. So that should have a packet of information in front of you. We turn to page two. This is the outstanding TIF net. Uh, scheduled, you've seen in the past, no two A bonds, which we just refinanced, besides the one on compounding payment, both two V bonds. Then the O eights, O nine bonds, which are in the middle, no problems. You see the net rates on those, those remaining interest rates on the two issues? The O eights, uh, six point one one percent, and the O nine is four point six one percent. Those rates are much higher than the current bond level. And also, it says the call date is December the first, I mean, upon the call. And we can refinance those bonds anytime within ninety days of the call. So we can pull them, the process goes back. And then the other one, we went up to the last two bond, the twenty nineteen Bs and the twenty nineteen As. See those rates look about the same, two point five eight percent and two point eight seven percent. When we were here in June, we had projected for the Bs, two point seven five percent. We got it down to two point five eight. For the As, we projected three point one five percent, which came in at under three percent, at two point eight seven percent. Uh, then the next table, just real quick, this is the debt service coverage. These bonds, as you're aware, are paid from the TIF increments, TIF two and six group. Uh, we're not assuming any growth, we're assuming, there will be growth, but we're assuming just based on the current tax increment coming in, the debt service on the same bond issues that just went through, that far writing, uh, calendar is the debt service coverage. So basically, anywhere from one point six times, all the way up to, well, really nine times in that last year. So significant coverage from the TIF to pay back the debt service on all the debt lines. Next page, page four, where are interest rates today? This is a ten-year snapshot of the bond buyer index. Just to give you an idea, it's kind of the S and P five hundred of municipal bond rates. So going back all the way to two thousand and nine, basically, when those bonds were originally issued that we're looking at, we've managed, which is on the left-hand side. All the way to the right-hand side is the A, which is where we're at at. You see a drop rate, so, near a hundred basis points over that same time period. Remember, in O eight, O nine, that's when the great session hit, interest rates, um, were much higher in the large day. That's why the two minutes, the value is out there. Jumping into that, what are the actual savings? We start showing that on page five. Oh, I'm sorry, page five of the bond register. So these are the O two A bond refinancing. Uh, so this is the final savings for the bonds. We saved approximately ninety-three thousand in interest costs. When we were here in June, projected about eighteen one thousand nine hundred. So we saved about eleven thousand dollars in additional savings on the month. Now jumping into the bond right away to that, nine, first series, the series four E bonds. And we see this is set up with two boxes. Current payments in the first box, right-hand side, where the projected, uh, new refunding bond. Where there's a six point one one percent. So there's a six point one one percent for the current O eight bonds. If you lock in the rate today, I'm showing you a range of about two point six two, two point ninety three percent. What does that do in savings? And that savings, that range for the last two bonds. So anywhere from a million, four forty-nine, a million, three eighty-six, or a million, four forty-nine savings on the O eight bonds. So pretty significant savings number just for that series. O nine bonds, set up to the exact same one that page seven. Again, we're not changing a term, the street financing of the low rate. Our rate will be anywhere from two point seven, two percent, three point zero, two percent, slightly higher since it was about twenty twenty-nine, because that's how they shoot it out to twenty twenty-eight, so over there. That savings is anywhere from four hundred and twenty-two thousand to five hundred and seventy-three thousand. So combined, that's showing on page eight. And combined savings, we could drop that net rate on the O eight, O nine bonds, which is about five point seven four percent. And we're from, uh, from five point seven four to two point six seven, two point nine seven. Net savings of anywhere from about a million, seven O eight, over two million dollars, two hundred and twenty-three thousand. And that savings is just by refinancing that debt. Again, not changing a term, same payment, payable from the TIF, but refinancing from the financials today. So very similar to what we did up in the A bonds. So that's projected savings from a high-end standpoint, this is the last page I want to pick over, page nine. Any questions? Uh, page nine, we're right today, committee of the whole means, letting this opportunity, uh, be known. Uh, knowing the engagement documents are plenty as well, that they cannot be, uh, for any action until next week of the whole. Then the plan would be August sixth, committee of the whole, we would have a parameter ordinance, uh, presented. The committee of the whole will be introduced. And then we come back August thirteenth, with the final parameter ordinance. Uh, with that passed, we're ready to refinance those bonds. We would look to price the bonds in the middle of August, uh, basically looking to price the bonds in, basically August twenty-first. The closing is September fifth. So it's a quick timeline, with the way interest rates are, we don't want to see them going back up. Um, and since we just entered into the bond this year in June, we got most of the documents, these templates all put together. From that standpoint, it's just really matter of few and a lot of others, uh, some dates, other than that, most of the documents. Talking to Chuck, who will present the aggressive timetable, just so we all missed the opportunity of the same.
Just there, real quick, one of the things, these savings, as many savings possible. And also, what it is, they helped us with the last one issue, is that we're worried to secure the airport and village bond insurance. Uh, without the bond insurance, these savings would not be possible, and my theory is savings would be non-possible. So that's a, that's a big concern we can't. Paul and I are prepared to raise some questions.
You have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of course, that meeting on the sixth of August, because we have national may up that night, so we'll change our timetable.
Any other, any other?
Any other question? Uh, when's the last time that we received bond insurance, uh, for the village? Has it been quite some time?
Uh, candidly, it had, no. Yes, but then again, the last time the village issued bonds, it's two thousand nine. Uh, with the recession, even though you went out of the market, we have other clients that were in the market, uh, silver and soft, soft earth. And because of the great recession, it was very difficult to get insurance for a lot of those, uh, clients. And as we saw, they gave substantial more interest rates. So I think, in a sense, because the village has had a frequent insurer, it probably spared the village from being rejected by bond insurers during the recession. Now with the economy better, the village doing better, it became a, a much more positive result.
Just, just to kind of add on to that, back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, there were six bond insurers. So, uh, at that, that, from that standpoint, they're competitive, they're insuring a lot of loan issues. Now it's two. It's much harder to qualify for the bond insurance, which is the two insurers that obviously more, uh, different. The difference in getting qualifications for insurance back in the way from that, compared to where we are today, is much more difficult. So a nice thing, including, you know, being these bonds insured, that drives that interest very much more, increases that savings.
Okay, I just wanted to say two things. One, thank you guys very much for the last one that you did, prepared for us. And you enabled us to, uh, use, uh, money from the TIF for the TIF areas, from the streets and everything that's included in that TIF to be used for that, that two point four something million dollars. But, and, uh, you did such, did a great job. I'm, I'm wondering, with this, what we're talking about doing now, is that leading toward one day we will be, we have, we will have a bond rating?
I would say yes, and you said a bond, I think I'm wondering now, the question, do you have a good one?
A good bond rating, yes, double A?
One of the things you don't worry is going to bond, as you said before, you said. Uh, there's good showings that indicate us that you won't be able to, number one. Versus, uh, uh, looking at the natural results, overall, if you, if you're managing positively. As you move closer to a positive fund balance, continuing to have good operations, uh, continuing to have good vision of the village, those would be positives. So that, that's kind of one thing. The other thing that's going to be, uh, a positive, and it's a challenge for all, all the communities, as I'm sure you've read about, is the whole pension situation. It's imperative that if, uh, all other things are considered, the pension situation in village does not get any worse. If it gets better along with the improved fund balances, we think that a good, positive fund, uh, rating would be possible. Back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, the village did have an S and P bond, you know, A, uh, which was very good. At that time, we think that's possible here. Uh, probably not a good idea to go out and try it for another two years. But it's something we should almost always be evaluated to simply, uh, and try to accomplish.
And the last question was, um, these premiums are going to be paid through the TIF. Correct? Well, the bond payment.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the bond payment is going to be paid through the TIF.
The bond payments will be made to the TIF, the bond payments for these bonds have always been made out of the TIF. And always had been covered very well by the TIF. So the TIF will continue to support them. And as a result of this, these bond issues, with the savings, this is going to require even less of the TIF to support the same amount of bond, which is positive.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll, they'll appreciate that too. Is there any other question? Okay, then, uh, you're looking at the timetable, uh, on the twenty-third, that you want to, uh, so that we want, that we put on our next, uh, board meeting and engagement letter, correct?
Uh, that's, that's what we proposed, we think, uh, we pulled together a very good team, and we're going to keep the same team.
Okay, so if you can give that to me, and let, how, just send it to the board, and then let them, then we can, uh, put this to the board on the next, next. Yeah, twenty, twenty-third. But I, I get the information from, from Chuck and Bob every now. You say you, oh, okay, this you do.
Yeah, we said the last week, though.
Okay. Oh, okay. Okay, then with this, with that, okay, with this, with this, page, and later on, they have a agenda to be ordered on.
Yeah, there's actually three of them, there's one for the larger securities, high smaller, and for K.
Oh, okay. Okay, and then we have to put all three on there. Hmm, no more question? Thank you very much, Chad. Good job, as always. The next item is, uh, review orders for standing committee, from the tribe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and you had this, I think, a couple of weeks ago. The only thing that has changed, um, public events was added, um, the parks and wrecks has been removed. Um, and what we changed in this, it said this committee will serve as a sponsor of all village public events. We changed it to men, we don't think it should say all, it could be men. Um, and that's the only thing that has changed on this standing committee. Also, um, what I want to see changed, I saw on the front that says Will County, we just need to remove Will County from this ordinance. Uh, seeing as we are no longer part of Will County. Are there any questions about this standing committee?
Just far, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I, sir?
Yes, right ahead.
Okay, as far as this, the public events committee, um, trust you tell, as we discussed, and I discussed with the mayor. Um, I thank you for taking out all events, because it's getting a little confusing, because the village clerk does run events. And I'm hoping some of the other committee members will run events. Um, but I also wanted to reiterate with the mayor, I did ask for that to be changed from public events to public relations, which is what it basically always was. So what I decided to do is just to, and have committee of public relations under that, that doesn't need to be in the ordinance. So, uh, but thank you for amending that, because it, it needed to be clarified.
Right, so we just decided to say, instead of all men, because we know that, um, Madam Clerk has other, she also does, uh, events.
And I'm hoping other people vote as well.
Okay, and if there's no other questions, can I have it put on the agenda for next week to be voted on? Fifty cent?
Okay. Uh, the next, the next one is the ordinance, uh, to update the village code, village service. Oh, okay, I thought that was. Okay, this is the ordinance that's amended, uh, chapter seventy-eight, the utility for the monthly building. And, um, it would be, it would really, you change it, section seventy-eight dash two one nine. Utility charge shall be payable monthly for residential, institutional, schools, and church users, and shall be based on meter reading. Each user shall pay a minimum charge based on four thousand gallons of water. I'm going to ask that question. So it should be two thousand gallons, I just was informed, not four thousand. Four thousand would be for two months. Of water used each month, each monthly period, it says here bimonthly, so it would be each monthly period. Each unit in a multifamily dwelling shall be charged and billed as a separate user of water. So they're going to make the changes from four thousand to two thousand, and then the charge goes once a month. And it will be billed every month, instead of every other month. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, on seventy-eight dash two zero, it's also talking about, um, to two thousand gallons.
Right, I just looked at that, I just saw that, yeah, and you're right. It did say four, but I just, I just got to crossing that out, and it, and it is, you're right, seventy-eight dash twenty, it says, uh, shall be a paid minimum charge based on four thousand, but that should be two thousand gallons.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just recommend that we get this information out there as best as possible for the residents, so that they know it's going to monthly, because I mean, there will be.
Correct, and when it's going to take effect? Correct, what's your approval?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's going, it's, I'm sure it's likely to take, where is the due date? Uh, there a date on here, oh, no, it has, where does it have a, a date that, uh, we were going to affect, it's not in there.
Remember, while with the CIVS contract, if you want the CIVS contract to screw?
Well, they, they, they can now, they can disseminate information. But there should be a date on here, stating when this will take effect.
Well, I.
It's going to take more than that, because some people, you're going to buy monthly basis right now, so it's going to, it's going to, it would probably have to take effect in September.
Well, I think with this ordinance that we're talking, we're just saying we're going to do it monthly. The next ordinance, which is the, um, CIVS draft, it'll tell you effective date, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its passage, approval, and publication. So that would address when it's going to take effect immediately, but I'm sure it's going to take a little bit of time.
I would say, that's why I said it should take effect in September, because we still have people that, you know, you have this month, which you'd like towards, you know, end of this month. It's due, then you got August. So therefore, I would think that it would be monthly, but starting in September.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
For clarification, uh, we won't start the monthly billing until the CIVS contract is approved.
I'm saying, I, I, I'm saying. I'm, I understand that part, I understand that, but I'm saying, if you're voting now, I'm, I'm sorry, you're discussing now whether to go monthly.
Right.
And when would you like to start that month?
When the CIVS contract is.
But when the CIVS contract, if it is approved, then you're still going to need a start date.
Okay, so if the CIVS contract is not approved, are you still going to go to monthly billing? That's, that's.
That's up to the board.
Okay, so my question is.
That's up to the board, I mean, um, it just, first of all, like I said, CIVS is going to follow the lead of what is passed.
Right.
They won't go monthly unless it's past monthly. So therefore, it just doesn't make sense that, you know, wait for what they're going to do, we're going to tell them what we have, we need for them to do. So right now, if we go monthly, I, this is just my suggestion, that it starts in September, if it's monthly. If it doesn't go monthly, if the board next week does not vote on it, then it's immediate issue, CIVS will still be, if they vote on CIVS, will still be here, but it'll be bimonthly billing.
Okay, my question is, will we be doing the entire village on a monthly basis at the same time? Or will we stagger like we did before? Because my concern is, if the entire village gets their bill at the same time every month, the front office is going to be, you know, a lot, twice as many people are going to be coming to pay their bill at one time.
Okay, but they won't, the, the thing, the reason that I thought it was, the reason that you were monthly, so they wouldn't have to pay as much. So we, because we have, so I mean, if it's more people, to tell you the truth. I hope that it gets inundated, I mean, the more people pay their bills, the better it is.
But the reason for the stagger billing to begin with, doing two different sites in a town two different times, is so that not everybody's getting billed, and therefore paying their bills at the same time. I'm just saying, that's a concern that I have. If everybody gets billed once a month at the same time, and has to pay their bills once a month at the same time, it, it could cause congestion at the windows. I know we have other ways to pay bills, besides coming to the front, I mean, we could pay online, we could utilize the Dropbox. I'm just stating, my concern is, if, you know, three thousand bills come out at the same time, and we're all doing the same thing, it'd make us proud. Stagger billing was a good thing, in my opinion.
I mean, I, I have no prob, I mean, I'll put it this way. Once a month, I would think more people would pay because it's less money. And then on that, it's, it's easier to, because by the time you, if you get to that point, we have to cut off, it's cut off at the same date every month. It won't be staggered, if, if the date is a month after you're supposed to pay, that you're going to start cutting off, or everybody knows they have a month, or whatever it is before they want it, they cut off. But if you, if, if you want to go, if the board wants to go bimonthly, and keep it the way it is, the reason that it was talked about, so it would save, uh, a lot of people. It's just like anything else, you have your, your, your mortgage every month, so, I mean, it would, it would be a less of a burden if you have to pay the less money each year every month. You have to, you have to, just like anything else, you got a budget for it. As far as the people coming to that front, front, front window, I would love to see a lot of people, I, I have no problem with that.
Maybe I'm not, I'm not making myself clear, Mayor, I'm sorry, let me, let me reiterate. I'm not saying that going monthly is not a good idea, I agree with that. What I'm saying is, we stagger when the bills go out and when they're due. So if you have, one half of the bills on the south side going out on the first, and the other half going out on the north side on the fifteenth. You don't have all the bills going out at the same time, and you don't have all people coming to the window at the same time. That's just my concern, I just want to make sure you understood my concern. That's just my concern, I just want to make sure you understood my concern.
I understand, you should not go to monthly billing. I don't know what you're saying. The, the, the due dates may differ.
Yes, well, the, the issue date and the due date, I'm just saying, that would eliminate, you know, everybody come, because you know, people come and pay their bill at the last minute. So what I'm saying is, you're going to have a lot of people at the window for two or three days before the end, trying to pay their bill, and it's inconvenient to the residents. If you stagger every bill at a particular time of the month, once a month, it's an advantage all the way around. It's just, it's just my opinion. I don't know how the other board feels about it, but I've seen at the end of the billing period how there's congestion at the window. Now you're going to double the amount of bills that are going out, and double the amount of bills that are being paid at the same time.
Well, it's up to the board, I mean, I don't see the reason for the first and fifteenth, I'm sorry. But it's up to the board, uh, we're going to vote on it, so, I mean, but now... I, I, we, we could vote on it, uh, I'm not, sorry. We're discussing it now, that's what we're here for, to discuss it. And if you feel that you want to pass it on and have it on the agenda for next week to be voted on, now is the time to say something. Does anybody else have anything to say?
I think that, so next week, we just voted on actually changing this to monthly.
Yes.
But we can also later discuss, uh, you know, whether it's going to be the first or the fifteenth, or all on the first, or all on thirty first, or whatever the case may be, but just the monthly part. But, I mean, we, we should come back and discuss it though, because, I mean, that is critical, uh, I mean, it is a good point, but I think that we should discuss it again, uh, and maybe...
So what is it that you, do you want to discuss, the first and fifteenth, or you want to discuss monthly?
No, the monthly is done, the first and fifteen.
So you're going to stagger a certain thing, okay, I mean...
I mean, I know, so... I would say, you know, we're going to pass this, and I agree, trustee Rand, that, yes, we're going to get this passed, once we do that, let's discuss how we're going to do the monthly billing. It's going to go to monthly billing. Do you want to do it in half, like you do in North-South? That's something that needs to be discussed, but this will be passed, it's just how we run it.
Right, and so also I think I need to get, uh, let's venture here, so, I mean, get his department, his front office, let him tell us, you know, get his employees, how will they be able to handle all the first, all on the fifteen, or split it up? If you hit the assessment on that.
Okay, uh, then Madam Clerk, would you put on the agenda, the resolution that we have here? The ordinance that we have here, and we have to put the wording in there for monthly.
In two thousand.
In two thousand, yes. Any other questions? Okay. Uh, next item, parks and recs, the record business.
The SEVIS.
Okay, no, I see, I'm sorry, I'm dropping down, I'm sorry, I dropped down. Okay, uh, the next one is the resolution to assess the one-year renewable contract with SEVIS for the utility bill.
Mr. Mayor, it says it has Exhibit A, and there's nothing attached.
I mean, for SEVIS? Okay, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me to address that. We received a contract from SEVIS, um, very late Friday or the beginning of the day on Saturday. On the screen, it looks fine. And I believe I emailed it to you. However, when it was time to print Exhibit A, then it was totally redlined, and you would not be able to really understand it. So we thought that we would still have a week before the actual vote would take place. But as long as we can get it on the agenda for next week, by then, you will have a more readable copy.
Thank you.
Did anyone, yeah, they, no one got a copy of this stuff? So then they'll have it by next week, so is it... Okay, then is there a problem with putting it on the agenda to be voted on? All right, the next item, prochamps.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees, and audience members. It's been about three months since I was here and this board adopted the ordinance, requiring properties that are in foreclosure and vacant properties to register with prochamps. In turn, the agreement was also signed between prochamps and the village. The agreement basically says that we are going to handle all the paperwork required for the foreclosures of vacancies and uproot properties. And the ordinance also says...
Speak a little louder, please.
...initiating the foreclosures and initiating the vacancies must pay three hundred dollars twice a year as their registration fee. Out of the three hundred that we collect in the prochamps, we cut checks monthly to the village, two hundred dollars for each one of the foreclosures and each one of the vacancies. To date, if you turn to page two of the document that I passed out on your desk there, you have had fifty-five registrations this year to date. In July, I just looked it up prior to this meeting, you have already registered another nine. If you take the fifty-five and multiply it times two hundred, will prochamps has issued checks totaling eleven thousand dollars to the Village of South Village? It's surely not going to balance your budget, but I think every penny counts. Is there any question about how the prochamps foreclosure works? And we're very happy to be partners, um, our success rate is growing daily. When I was here, we had about twenty-two registered partners, no more. As of today, we have thirty-three. The next thing that I would like to bring to your attention, now that we have proved ourselves, we also do other types of registrations. One of them is pet registration. And I know when I was here ninety days ago, there was a pretty good discussion about dogs, and somebody barking, and whiting, and all that kind of stuff. And that's not unique just to South Village. I did check with staff, for fiscal year twenty eighteen, sixty fully dog licenses were issued in this village. According to the American Pet Association, there are over two thousand three hundred and thirty-six dogs in this town. I'm not saying staff's not doing their business, but staff has a lot of other things, and collecting owner bills, and collecting utility bills, and all the other things, that they don't have the resources to go after these pet owners on a daily basis. They just sit there, you send out a letter, you post it on your webpage, and you hope people comply. We literally contact each and every pet owner in your village, showing them the ordinance that would be put in place if they must register. You also have two thousand five hundred and fifty-two cats in this community. It would be your call, we have communities that even register horses. It would be up to you to decide whether you want to do dogs, cats, horses, lizards, we don't care, that's our case. We do think that there is a need for registration. Currently, I don't know, I apologize, I didn't ask that when I talked to staff, what we currently charge for pet registrations. We would retain five dollars for every pet registration. Whatever you're charging, if you charge ten dollars, which is normal, you would get five dollars. So everybody's going to say, well, we lose money. Last year, you made about three hundred and some dollars. I think prochamps will do that in the first one. So I would ask that this be placed on a future agenda, whether it's the next week's agenda or the following agenda, we can have the ordinance and the agreement prepared, have legal look at it, and clear it up for adoption. I'm not going to say we're going to collect two thousand three hundred, but even if we collect a thousand, five dollars apiece, that's a lot more money than what you're getting right now. That's pet registration. The other thing that you will notice, if you all Google "pet champs", the E-T-C-H-A-M-P-S, you will see the webpage where the people will register. People will want to register. There's not only in the registration page, there's a blog that is active twenty-four hours a day. There's a Twitter account that is out twenty-four hours a day. We encourage the people to be pet lovers. There's also a three-one-one emergency on there. I lost my dog. We then notify every veterinarian office in every police department within a fifty-mile radius of where the dog was lost. So it's interactive, is what I was getting at, with people today like that. So they will be encouraged. What's most important, I think, is the factors like the dog was being discussed that was a nuisance. Many, many, too many dogs are not getting the regular shots. And by county ordinance, it is a law. We would enforce that. And a lot that we do in the ordinance that you hopefully will pass, it will clearly say that the veterinarian doctors within the suite must work with us to give us the names and addresses of pets that they have received on a regular basis, and then we contact everyone. That's pet champs. Uh, the next page actually gives you the breakdown. You've got a hundred and sixty-four horses over in the town, too. Now, that's a little ambiguous, doesn't mean they're here, and you have owners and horses here. They may be somewhere else. But it gives you the breakdown of the dogs at household. Your dogs, for example, like I said, you have two thousand three hundred and thirty-six. They are in one thousand four hundred and sixty-year homes, which is a considerable amount of your housing stock considering your residential housing is about forty-two hundred. So twenty-five percent of the people in their houses have dogs. That's quite a lot. And we actually turn to the last page. It's another program that we've had in place for a long time. It is a rental inspection certification ordinance. Everybody's going to say, we can't do that, we're not a rule. You're not doing a registration, you're doing a certification inspection. Your neighbor, Lynn Wood, has been doing it for over fifteen years. They're not, not through us. They will be because, uh, staff and the board realizes it's way too time-consuming for staff to do that. All that staff will have to do, we would gather all the information... We would gather all the information of the rental units, the property owners, and it's up to the board to decide what other information we want to gather, such as, you want the names and ages of the people living in the apartment, or just how many people are living in the unit, that's up to you to decide. We can actually require anything because you did have some ordinance. Currently, you have about forty-two hundred residential units in this town. Statistics shows that nineteen hundred are owner-occupied. Fifteen hundred and forty-eight are rental-occupied. The state average is thirty-five percent of all communities are rentals. You're a little bit higher, you're at forty-five percent. Not saying that's bad, I'm just giving these numbers. Your potential revenue, if you were to adopt a certification inspection ordinance, would be in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars. Now you're going to be able to put an extra staff person on the front counter to collect that water bill money. Yet also, most police departments love this program because it gives them the opportunity to go into apartments where they haven't been able to get into without a search warrant before. Because the ordinance will say that inspector has the rights to come into that unit once a year. And the reason they're going in is not to harass or beat up anybody, it is to make sure your housing stock doesn't deteriorate. Landlords aren't best at keeping up their properties, and they need to be brought up to code. So the code officer would go in, write up the deficiencies, and give them a certain amount of time to fix those deficiencies. A lot of times, it's just as simple of, you can't have twenty-five extension court running around the house. Those types of things. It gives you more control of your properties in your town, that's what it does. We recommend the fee be a minimum of a hundred dollars and a maximum of a hundred and fifty dollars annually per unit. We retain twenty-five dollars of the fee. And that's what I'd like to tell you tonight, folks. And I'm open for questions.
Any questions?
I would close by asking, should I have our attorney prepare ordinances and agreements for these two presentations, pets and the inspection rentals?
I did have one question.
Okay.
And that's with the pet. I heard what you stated, how that people would want to join. And I'm assuming that's how you get to find out who has pets and who doesn't have pets.
It's not the only way, the other way, and then I explained it, but I may have been not clear enough. We work with your local veterinarian, and they supply us by the ordinance that'll say they must give us the information. They can't give us, because there are, believe it or not, people laws for dogs also. They can't give us what's wrong with the dog, but they give us the owner's name, address, and contact information.
Do you have any other, any other question?
You say you do other things other than registered?
Just, well, when I came here, the only, originally, we presented the idea to staff and to the mayor and the clerk, the idea of the prochamps, the foreclosures, and the vacancies. And we said ahead of the thing, it's, I like to learn to walk before I walk. I think we have proved ourselves, it is a success. Now I think it's time that you join on, you get the pet champs and the prochamps and rentals.
I, I really do believe that the pet champs is accurate, figures, and they're giving us... But how about bill sticker compliance, are you ready to work with that?
We're not there yet, there, my history, I know there's a few new members here, congratulations on your election. My history is, I'm a retired city man after eighteen years. There was a company called Third Millennium out there that does a phenomenal job with vehicle stickers. My last job was with Dalton. When I got there, they were collecting about five hundred vehicle stickers a year. The first year, they increased it to almost eleven thousand. And I stood really kind of with what the mayor said, let them come, I like to see lines. I can always have the staff stay longer, and it's a lot cheaper to pay a sticker to a clerk than it is to a fireman or a policeman. So, I, if I could just interject from my experience with the water billing, I agree that altering, uh, staggering the dates is a good idea. My concern is, and I don't know enough, so I'll ask, how do you read your water readers now? Do you do them manually?
There'll be a pass round, we have a meter reader, we have a reader.
Are they going to be able to get them all done within a second? That was my, we had a problem with that at all. That was our problem, so we went to the radio, we said. Other than that?
Are you moving the episode on the communities?
Yes, um, your neighbors I just spoke about, Lynn Wood is doing it. And they just, just like you folks are doing. Mitchton Park has signed, they signed up, well, it was at their committee meeting, they're going to be voting on it on the twenty-third August. I've never heard of them taking summer vacations under the board. Rockford is doing it. And Rockford, you think you got a big number here for, your number here of potential foreclosures for the new members is, you have a hundred and fifty-seven active foreclosures, Mr. Mayor. Rockford has one thousand four hundred and eighty active foreclosures. Today alone, we registered ninety properties in Rockford. I forgot to mention, in July, right now, we have already registered nine more.
The prochamps, I'm sorry, the pet champ.
Pet champ, prochamp, same thing.
And, uh, and then also the...
Rentals?
Rentals will both require a, uh, resolution.
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
It needs to be a law, yeah.
Okay.
Just like we prepared it for the foreclosure and vacancy, we would be more than happy to prepare that document.
If you could send that, and then we can, after the tour, somebody has to do this trustee. We'd go with that. I have a question. Do we need another meeting to discuss this? Okay, well then, could you just send us the ordinance, and then we can see what's going on with it?
Of course.
And then after that, I will send it out. We'll discuss it at the next committee meeting, which is in two weeks, and then after that, we'll go.
Sorry. I'm going to put in the agreement that we are going to retain $5 for the pet tag and $25 for the rental certification. I will put in that the fee is $10 for the pets. But you can change that at any time, may not be prior to the vote. You can just redline that and put in whatever number you want. And I'm going to put in $100 of the ordinance for the rental inspection. And you again can redline that and change that like at any time prior to voting. If that's okay?
Can we do two separate ones? Can we do one for the pets and then one for the rentals?
There will be two separate ordinance, yes. And that, otherwise, it's just too confusing for the code officers and courts. Thank you for your time.
The next item is a court call for contacting the village attorney. For reasons, because we already know that when we first came in, that if you wanted to contact attorney, we would kind of let you know so we can know and keep the bills down. I see that I may have to put another memo out because my bills have doubled since April. April, I billed for $7,000 to this particular attorney. And I just got a bill here, and everyone's got it. It went from $7,000 to $16,000. So we need to keep a handle on that. So if you need to contact attorneys, please let me know so we can, and I'll put it out in the memo. We had it before, I'm sorry. If I'm correct, I did put it out to the new trustees, but the trustees over here already knew that and they would, you know, let me know if that's something that we needed to contact attorneys for. So right now, it's hitting out of hand. It's too much. This, this is, it is. And that's really, you know, if we keep going, we're going to put the memo to them. So right now, it doubled, more than doubled than what we did in April. So I will put a memo out, and that's basically what I had to... Oh, I'm sorry. The clerk was just telling me about something with, if you need to, and this is pertaining to trustee, I'm sorry. If you need to contact other taxing bodies, it would be nice if you just let myself and the clerk know. Because we, it has happened, and we didn't know anything about it. And the person that was taxing body contacted us and asked us, did we know about this? And I said no. So if we could shoot a memo or CC or something to let us know that you're doing that, we would also like to know that too.
Can you be more specific?
Um, it was one of the, I think, one of the, someone talked to Dr. Lee and was having a, I guess, an event. And she was, she contacted the clerk and said, did we know, did she know anything about it? And she said, no, well, I didn't know anything about it when she told me about it. And she said, usually, you know, you guys, you guys being the clerk and the mayor is usually, you know, notified so we can, so she likes to deal that way. Which makes sense if she, I mean, she's the superintendent. She would probably want to deal with the mayor. Well, the clerk will find out, work with the clerk, so the clerk can disseminate it and the mayor so we can know about what's going on. So I'm just asking that we, if we do talk to another taxing body, that we at least, uh, CC or notify that that's what you're trying to do, reach out to another taxing body. Okay. Next item is Parks and Recreation Director's position.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, we had a gentleman approach the podium that was very upset about the Parks and Recreation Committee. The fact that he's been volunteering his time in an unpaid position and basically supplying a lot of supplies that he needs in order to operate the community center. I can understand his frustration. And after the meeting, I asked him if he had applied for the job as the Parks and Recreation Director that's been online, I think now, for several months. He said he did in fact apply for the position. So my question is, is his resume being considered? Because as was stated earlier, the Public Events Committee is not responsible for all events. Many events actually runs through the Parks and Recreation Committee, of which we no longer have a Parks and Recreation Committee. So I'm a little concerned because as a volunteer, this particular individual can only do so much. But there's so much more that needs to be done and can be done. So my question is, are we, as a village, are we considering this application? Does he need to resubmit an application? Has anyone other than him submitted an application? Because at this point, we do need to get our Parks and Recreation back in order. We have several events coming up very soon. We've got the Corner Dog Rose, which is usually Parks and Rec. We've got the Trunk or Tree, and we've got Christmas tree lighting, and many events coming up. So basically, I wanted to address the fact that the gentleman came up, and he had a very valid complaint. So could you address that, please?
Okay, are you looking, it sounds like you're looking to pass that on if there is that such a person?
Well, yes, I'm asking, has anybody applied?
I understand that part. I'm just saying, it looks like you're looking to, if that person does exist or that position is filled, you're looking to pass the Corner Dog Rose and the, I guess, Trunk or Tree and Easter egg and all that up and stuff on it.
When we first, when we first talked, Mr. Mayor, you said you weren't expecting Public Events to do all of those. I did send an email out to everybody, including taxing bodies today. Everybody got the exact same email about the next upcoming events and the fact that I will be having a Public Events Committee later, which I'll talk about later. But that email that went out early today went out to everybody, including taxing bodies. And basically, in the email to the board, though, I did say, these are the events that are coming up. What would you like to be a part of? Which event would you like to champion? Because the Public Events Committee doesn't have a budget, and I can't expect my volunteers to do everything that we get ready to do. So that email did go out earlier today. So in the answer, I think the Corner Dog Rose, if I'm not mistaken, comes up in early September? Mr. Mayor? Because I know I've done it. Okay, early September? So again, yes, I am asking to see who's going to champion those events. So there's no question.
So you're asking that if, that happens, that this person take that? That's the only question.
This person, if a person is appointed, and if not, then we have to decide as a board who's going to champion that.
Okay, because that's all I was asking, but this is gone. Yes, I did have two. I was trying to hold out. And I will interview the two, because I'm looking for a little bit more than just one thing. The gentleman that was doing the, gentleman that was doing Yoma's job. And you're absolutely right. And he's absolutely right. If I'm going to bring somebody in to do that position, I would quite naturally ask the person that's actually doing it and not just let them know what the duties and the position would entail. And it's going to be a little bit more than just watch the kids. So that part, I haven't reached out to the other person yet, but I will do both of that, and then I'll get back to the board with my decision. Okay, is that all for the... Okay, the next one is the removal of the copy of construction for elected officials.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason I brought this back to the table is because the first month I was elected as a trustee, and we agreed that we would be limited to 100 copies. Two weeks into July, I was unable to make copies. I came in to make copies of bills so I could get brought up to speed on what's going on. And apparently, I exhausted my copies pretty quickly. When I came in here to do my committee meeting, fortunately, it was five minutes to five. And there was a staff member here that could make a copy of my agenda for me. If that staff member wouldn't have been here, I wouldn't have had copies for my agenda or my minutes because I was already restricted within two weeks. So my question is, I'd like to bring this back to the table. We agreed that trustees would be limited to 100 copies. That doesn't work for me. I've got three events coming up in the next few weeks. And I need to have copies to be able to distribute to the public. So I would like to see that the copy restrictions for elected officials is lifted.
Okay, now, you do realize that I did poll everyone and ask them at that time. And at that time, it was decided that the restriction would be lifted for the clerk. And everyone else had no problem with it. But now you're saying that you want everyone to have unlimited access to the, I'm sorry, elected officials to have unlimited access to the copy. I'll poll that in here. Is that, is that okay?
I've always thought it should be unlimited. And if you had an issue with the trustee, you would address it with the trustee. But I thought it should be unlimited.
Trustee rule? Trustee's a bill?
It makes no difference.
Trustee's a bill?
Well, right now, we're in the middle of the season where we're going to be at our fest, so I'm going to go with this unlimited.
Okay, so it's on the record that he would be unlimited access to the copy. For the elected officials. All right, public comment. Our question and comments will be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter pertaining to the visit to the Rock Village. Each speaker's allowed one opportunity to speak for three minutes on any topic. And if there will be no debating or kind of discussion, I'll ask all questions at the end. If the questions get personal, I will stop, question and answer period, and that's what it is. Please state your name when you come up to the floor.
Judy Gash here. I'd like to bring up an incident that occurred after the board meeting last Tuesday. I'd like to bring up an incident that occurred after the board meeting last Tuesday. Upon leaving the building, it was completely dark outside, difficult to see. As I inched my car and got in, I started backing up, and I don't know what made me stop. And then I started inching back. And finally, I saw a garbage bin behind my car, all over to the side. Had I not stopped and inched my way back, I would have hit the bin, the garbage, which was full. When I pulled in, there was nothing there. When I left, there was no car to my right on passenger side. I was going to cut my wheel and just back out and go. Had I done that, I would have hit that bin. After I finally got out, and I met with friends, and I told them, you'll never guess what just happened to me. And I told them about the bin. One of them said she was sitting in her car, and she watched an employee's the bin there. I didn't think much of it at the time, but the more I thought about it, I decided to make a police report. Because the more I thought about it, the more I thought, what was the intent? What was someone trying to do to prove? Why would they do something like that? So I did make a police report. The witness also was there. Other people were there that saw that the garbage can behind my car. And the incident report, I picked it up. And it does mention a few things in it that I disagree with. But in its entirety, I agree with it. It is what I said. It is what happened. And unfortunately, due to the darkness or whatever reason, there is no camera back there, or there wasn't one that night. But I think an employee that will do something like that, again, what was the intent? What was hope to gain by doing something so childish? And I feel that you, as the mayor, need to look into the situation and see exactly what happened and who did it and why. And if you're interested, I'd be glad to help.
Good evening. My name is Nick K. Thomas. And the reason why I'm approaching you all today is because for the past three months, I have had concerns about Public Works. I was hoping the supervisor would be here tonight. But the main issue was, when I first came here three months ago, was regarding the trees in the South Village neighborhood. Now, I see that they have been cutting trees. Just last week, I came into the office to talk to the mayor. On my block, Public Works, I don't understand why it's 10 people at one time? But only one gentleman was cutting the trees. All the rest of the other guys standing around. On my block, myself and my neighbor have trees that should have been cut down over 20 years ago. They are completely dead. My neighbor's tree got cut down. However, they skipped my house. They left all of his logs and items from his tree in my yard. Three days it took for them to come to the moving. I called Public Works, I called the office here, was unable to leave a message with the supervisor because his voicemail is full. His voice still has been full for the past two weeks. In that incident, I think that it's unprofessional to be a supervisor and your voicemail is full. I came into the office, wrote out two complaints, and asked for him to call me. I have yet to receive a call. So I came today because just last Friday, I was told to come back to the meeting. If I'm able to approach the mayor to give you pictures of the tree that is in my yard that should have been cut, the same time that they cut my neighbor's yard. And I've been at that property over nine years. In the nine years, not one week, nothing has grown on that tree. And myself and, like I said, my neighbor, they cut his tree down and drove red petting signs. And I just don't understand how you're in a public office, in a position, and the residents are unable to leave you a message. When the voicemail is full, eventually, you check their messages. But if you're leaving the voicemail full, you are trying to avoid your job to talk to people with their complaints. So I'm hoping that that is taken care of, and I don't go another year with the tree because, like I said, that tree is very depressing. And I don't understand how you pick and choose which house or tree you're going to cut down when you're out there supposed to do a job and have 20 people on one block to cut down one tree, and only one gentleman is doing the cutting. That's a waste of taxpayer money.
Yeah, yeah, Barbara. Mr. Mayor, when you were reading the village code 78-219, you had mentioned churches, schools. And I think that that line should also have public library on it. I know we had an issue once before, and the town had said that they would put public library in that line for building water things too. And I didn't hear you mention it, and I thought I would have to make sure that it goes in there.
Jan Clark?
Your voice discussion by ProChamps concerning possible dog registrations. Many companies, I'm not saying ProChamps is one. I'm just saying many companies get information, names, addresses, phones, what have you, and they sell this information to, you know, people who want to advertise to certain groups of people. If things go forward with them, or companies of this manner, can it be put in their agreement that there would be no South Village residents' information exchanged with any other companies? And I have one other question. Parks and Recs director position. And it was addressed by Debbie Williams. Are you the Parks and Recs person? Mr. Mayor, is she? Okay. Have you assigned her to certain duties on behalf of the village, other than being a trustee?
I'm gonna ask all the questions at the end.
Okay, I was just wondering why she said she has some activities already started forever on behalf of our town and our community, where she has already contacted other towns. If we don't have someone in this position, is she taking it upon herself? That's just a question. I'm not saying it's good or bad. I mean, anyone could have, you know, I could call a circus in if I wanted to, maybe. Which I wouldn't do. That is my concern about tonight's meeting. Oh, and the, um, Ms. Martha Campbell Poitier, she has also been put in the position of organizing things for the village. Is this a new position for you? Is this a new position for the clerk? That was my question there. And I am concerned still with water hydrants. How many are, still need to be repaired?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Eric Sack. And I want to first commend you all on the matter of which you've done yourself today. I hope you see more of this. There was a special meeting today I missed, and I'm sorry that I did, because I just wanted to make an official complaint regarding the trustees hiring practices. This is not allowed under the Illinois statutes and compiled statutes. Trustees do not have the authority or power to hire or fire. They do have the power to, uh, to confirm or deny the mayor's appointments. However, they cannot. And I'm concerned about that because my money is at stake. I just paid my taxes, thirty-six hundred dollars. And I want to see my money spent right. With regard to the championships ordinance, I'm concerned that residents, rental residents or homeowners have their rights infringed upon enough. And I hope it's taken into consideration before you vote to allow someone to just have access to someone's property. Illegally, in my opinion, if you just walk in someone's house without a warrant, that's a violation of their inherent rights. And who's gonna pay for it? Does the tenant pay, or does the owner pay? I think these things should be considered for your tax people any more than they already been taxed. And that's my opinion for today. And thank everybody for their support today.
Good evening. I was here about six weeks ago. Three gentlemen, they were Johnson. Johnson? Good evening, I'm Johnson. I went to thank the residents last week who championed the sign coming down. And on the end of my block, I would say, first of all, if I criticize publicly, I can acknowledge when people do the right thing publicly as well. And Mayor, you made a commitment to something. Thank you for your leadership and your follow-through. I wish Chief White was here to be addressed as well. The SSS, the white supremacy symbol, is still up. I still think that there's some issues. And I even know some amendments need to be made to the ordinance for state signs that are more specific. Although I think they're there, I'd like to know if he's still being taken it. I was under the impression that he would be taking it until all of the signs were down, not just turned around. So I'd like that question. I also want to say to trustee Williams, thank you for following through with your part, for checking that, for giving me your word and being committed to that. So I'd like to commit you as well. Chief White said something that was really important, and that was about changing the culture of the village and changing the culture of the work. I haven't been, I've been in South Village a long time, but I'm not really involved in the politics. So I'm coming to the meeting so that I can learn and understand where everybody stands, so that I can shape my own opinion about what you do. But I can say that partial improvement is not improvement. And I think that we need to do more because the white supremacy sign is equal to a swastika. I'm still offended. I just don't like it. And I'd like to know what else is being done, if anything, to rectify the situation. It still affects land value. It still affects lawlessness and creates a sense of fight back. So can I please understand what's going on and where we are with that? And I am also the council neighbor, so I would second that she needs to come down with this thing.
Good evening. I'm Yolanda Warner Lewis. I just wanted to thank you guys first. I'm sorry. Yolanda Warner Lewis.
Lewis?
Warner Lewis. So I wanted to thank you for, I was here several weeks ago when the yards to the water main hall, they had something in front of my driveway and cracked my driveway. So you put a nice horse there, which now is impeding my ability to get into my driveway. So I was just wondering how long will the project take for the repair of that manhole cover that has recessed the curve of my driveway? Was my first concern. Then I have another concern. I was wondering if I could make amendment to one of the ordinance. I have here number oh four twenty. Not very familiar with any of this political stuff. But it has to do with sheds. I had an issue, I had a issue where I had a shed being delivered, and it was intercepted because it was twenty-four inches too high. I just want to say that in the back of my property is wetland. That shed will not impede anyone. It will not affect or is not detrimental to any resident in the village of South Village. So I was wondering if, well, I would like to make amendment to the ordinance that has one fifty point oh two three in regards to the size of the shed. It says the maximum height of the shed should be ten feet. Mine is twenty-four inches higher than that. So I would like that to be changed to twelve. Also, in regards to the foundation, says it should be of concrete. I would like to add that concrete slash pavement is not less than two inches thick. Because the shed that I have has a very good flooring and has its own anchoring system. So one other concern was, I wasn't sure if this ordinance was even effective. It was dated in May eleventh, twenty oh four. As I was reading, skimming through the website, I read ordinance thirteen dash of seven, section three, stated that all certified ordinance of or general of permanent nature and active order before February February twelfth of twenty thirteen is repealed. So if you could just look at this ordinance to see if it's still effective, I would really appreciate that.
Heidi Parker. I would like to get back to the Parks and Rec position. I think it's a shame that it's almost the end of July, and the position has been posted for several months, and no one has been hired. If someone approached Ms. Williams, trustee Williams, why should she not bring it up and ask about it? Since nobody else seems to be concerned. Also, what I believe that the trustees are doing, they're doing the right thing. They get the village back into shape. For the past two years, I would say things have gone without supervision, without approval of the board. Monies have been moved without approval of the board. I remember you standing in town hall meetings and blasting Mayor Hanks about removing money from the waterfront. I would like to know how many times you have taken advantage of that. And now we have a town hall meetings again. I actually must be coming up, right? Okay. Both be watching.
Yeah, good. I just want to say that to everyone that came and talked to me and called me, about everything that was going on, your calls, whatever, having gone, their bills, just waiting on the next election. All right.
The incident as far as the parking lot, you filed a report. I'm sure that that report was big paid. What goes on, I'm not privy to that report. I didn't even know this one was filed. As far as the trees concerned, as far as the person that talked about the trees, I just wanted to let this person know, I did give that information. And I'm sad to see that tree is still up. Because I gave that information to the Public Works Director, and instructed him to do something about it when I got to. But I was at the front counter, I saw you there, you told me about what happened. And I passed it along, so tomorrow I will find out why that wasn't done. The last thing I remember though, I'll put it, I'll say this much, when I talked to him about that, and then I asked him, is it, I'm going to take care of it. At that particular time, it was maybe two days after I instructed this, and he told me that our chipper was down. And I'm sorry, our chipper and our lift was down. But now it's been fixed. And you're saying right now this is still up, so tomorrow I will find out what happened with that? Because he, you know, if it's not insured, then why is it still here? So I will look at that. Sorry that his voicemail is full, I will look into that also. He was asked about this trustee Williams, Parks and Recs director. Trustee Williams does not, doesn't have that committee. She has the Public Events Committee. So, but she does do public events and some of those events at one time was out of Parks and Recs. But that's what that is, to know she's not Parks and Recs Director. She is the Public Events Coordinator, and that is her committee. As far as the fire hydrants, we wait, the committee do have fire hydrants in stock right now in the village. I also talked to the Public Works Director about that. And we're trying to find out what our capital money, when that starts coming in, and how do we, how do we get to go and start doing the thing that we need to do in the village with infrastructure, fire hydrants, and everything that was idolized in that capital bill? So that's something that is always waiting on the state to tell us, okay, we can spend the money, or we're gonna get reimbursed. So I'm looking to spend money and not know if we're gonna get reimbursed. So I've been waiting on that cost. To the lady that talked about the sign, first of all, I want to say thank you, but I'll put it this way, but I go in at the front, but that person is still being taken today. And the courts are gonna take charge of that. Until you just said something, and that's something that I never knew, till you just spoke, that those S's meant that, I did not know that. I did not know that, I never knew that. I just thought, so I did not know that that's what that meant. So, but I'll just put it this way, the courts are gonna take care of it. And the person that wanted to drive away, I would suggest, and I will have to find out when the next zoning board meeting is that, because you have to petition them for an amendment. The board does not do that, you have to petition them, let them know why you want it amended, your calls. They listen to it, they break, and they forward that recommendation onto the board. The zoning board, they meet periodically. I don't know when the next one is going to meet. But as soon as it is, I will make sure, if you leave me, well, I know where you're at, so I'll let you know when the next zoning board meeting will take place. And I know that he doesn't know when the next board meeting, zoning board meeting is gonna be too soon. I'm sure he's gonna have one soon. So the next one, I'll make sure that you're notified and that you're able to come to that board to me and petition to have that particular thing that you want amended. That's where it's done at, it's done at the zoning board. That being said, I think the shed, the driveway, I, oh, I'm sorry. I did, I'm sorry, the driveway, okay, that's the same person. The driveway is, they're waiting on, because the driveway, the sewer pipe itself, for some reason was sitting on bricks. And the brick shifted and dropped down. So they're gonna have to clear all that out, raise that back up, put a sleeve in there, and then redo that, because it's a little, it's a little intense. And they're waiting till they get everything in place. So when they do it, they can do it all in one day. So I will find out what the status of that and get that back to you too. All right, last item is comments. I'll start across trustee five. Trustee rule? Trustee defense? Trustee wait?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad that people are interested in what's happening with the events in South Village, because we've got quite a bit planned. I was appointed to the Public Events Committee. So we are going to be actively looking for people to participate, not only So we are going to be actively looking for people to participate, not only on the Public Events Committee, but also in the public events. And the first one that's coming up pretty shortly will be the National Night Out. And that's a public event that everybody participates in, if they choose to. All committees, all board members, school, library, churches, they've all got an email today inviting them to participate in whatever way they choose. It's gonna be very interesting. I've already been working with Chief White. We've got quite a good plan. It's gonna be exciting. It'll be on Tuesday, August sixth. So we will not have a board meeting on Tuesday, August sixth. Three other events that are already in the works is, number one, on July twenty-seventh, we have a Generational Wealth Seminar Education Empowerment Series in partnership with the Law Offices of Mario A. Reed. This will be a three-part series, and the first one is going to take place on Saturday, July twenty-seventh, from eleven to one P.M. in the Saw Village Municipal Center. Learn about wills, trusts, direct beneficiary tools, how to help your loved ones, ideally avoid probate court, and more at this free workshop facilitated by Mario Reed. He's done these workshops in Saw Village quite often, and believe me, I learn something new every time I attend one. The next thing we're going to be doing is the Robotics Workshop on August seventeenth from one to four for youth ages nine to thirteen. This builds mindstorms, robots, visual programming using Lego D V three software. Program and use the different sensors, learn gears and gear ratios. There's only a spot for twenty youth at this event. I highly encourage that people jump on this as soon as possible. This is a very exciting event, and I think every child age nine, thirteen, better hurry up and give me a call because only twenty spots are open. And then we have the Cook County Commissioner, Donald Cook County Sixth District, in partnership with Cook County Chair Tom Dart, along with Saw Village, are hosting a recycling event on Saturday, August seventeenth, from nine to noon. And that would be outside the village hall. We will be recycling medicines, documents ready, electronics, only one T V per household. So it's very important that we start assessing now what we can get rid of on August seventeenth because rather than throw it in your trash bin or rather than dispose of your prescriptions a different way, I would appreciate it if you would bring it to the village hall on Saturday, August seventeenth, between the hours of nine to noon. And again, as far as National Night Out is concerned, if anybody would like to participate as a volunteer or has any ideas on what we can bring to the table to bring this community together, I'm all ears. Thank you.
The next committee meeting will be on the twentieth of August, here at eleven o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two comments. First comment is that budget finance committee's meeting, meeting tomorrow at seven o'clock during the Sunday. And the second meeting, I mean, second comment is that in regards to that meeting, special meeting, very disappointed in this board and some acting they took. I think they're really doing the residents a disservice by sending the margin of resolution they passed. Really, I've been talking about transparency and working together, but we have not done that. So I would hope that we get better with that going forward. Keep in mind that we do have a budget to pass, and we should pass it soon as possible. I know that we will pass a stopgap resolution. In the meantime, that doesn't mean that we prolong it any further. The finance committee gave us a balanced budget that it stands. I hope that we take into consideration and act accordingly, and that's all I have.
Only thing I have is, as someone eluded, this is not the, um, election period next year, two thousand and twenty-one. But I will start doing town hall meetings, and the next, the first one will be this next week, a week from tomorrow, here at seven o'clock. You ever been to my town hall meetings before? They're not personal. I mean, they're here to, and they're not gonna be there for you. Session to berate people. We're here to answer questions, deal with problems, and talk things out. You been to my meetings before? That's exactly when the people start to get me personal, I end it or I have to personally leave. And that's not, I'm not here to talk about another person or anything. I'm here to solve problems. We're here to talk about, we're here to see if we can come up with a solution other than point fingers and rate other people. That being said, I have some motion to adjourn.
Some movement.
Second.
Third.
All in favor?
Aye.